At West Tennessee Bank, we provide all the financial tools you'll ever need to manage your money more effectively, helping you stretch each dollar, making it go farther, adding value to every purchase. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal housing lender, member FDIC.
All right, there is a quiet presence, so we'll go ahead and proceed with the meeting. We'll welcome everyone out tonight. We have several things on the agenda, and Glenn told me to hurry it up. So we're going to go ahead and get started. The first thing is the consent agenda. It has several things in it. I know that one of the things is about the budget amendments. One thing that's in there, if anybody were to have any questions on that, we have the experts sitting across the table from us.
I want to discuss the budget separately or just in the agenda?
Okay, it's in there. So what do you want to talk about?
I'll find it.
All right. We're going to look at the general purpose budget.
Yeah. Regular instructions for under supervisors.
What page are you going to want?
Six. Seventy-two, two-ten. Are we adding some supervisors?
Actually, no. We actually are moving two supervisors that were paid out of federal funds over to general purpose.
Eighty-three thousand increase, huh?
That's what that is. They were being paid out of Title II funds.
Supervisors in under that purpose.
Two automotive bits and Randall.
I thought they were under the regular supervisor.
And we're moving them over. That's what Hank says. And I think that is also outlined on our...
I only just said something about hiring two.
Yes. But it might not have got added then.
Two guidance counselors. It's already in here.
No, it's right here.
Let's be on that sheet we got tonight.
Yeah, it was. And I typed that number, but it says main Title II portion salary for Sarah and Randall.
Our expectations are the funding from the federal government, the title is going to be diminishing. It's already diminishing now, will be diminishing more in the future. So far, we have the funding available. We moved their salary, portions of their salary that was being paid out of title funds over to GP. So that's the increase. All right. How's it going, guys? Pretty healthy increase.
Good question.
Now, the other ones, supervisors, you know, that's in the agenda.
And one thing too, guys, that I talked Stacy with the desk over about, all of this is just proposed into the numbers from the state.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's...
Yeah, but I'm here.
It's what's set aside to be spent. And of course, gasoline needs to be changed, the diesel, because gasoline...
It's a state charter account. That comes directly from the state charter accounts.
I knew one time that it's my state of the gas. I said, must be stealing a lot. So that's the only other question I had.
Motion approved.
I've got a motion approved.
Right. We have a motion circuit, they're not approving. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
The folks know, and that is approved. Okay, the next thing is delegations. I don't believe we have any delegations here tonight. Okay, bring it up there. Yes.
This was added to your packet today, and we actually just got this from the state this, in the last hour. And it's just a ready-to-be-grant that was awarded to East Chester. We want to make the budget approved so that we can pay those funds when those teachers do that summer reading program. And it's 100% covered by the state. It's just a state dream that she applied for, and she was...
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion second. We approve the grant. Do you have any other discussions? Call if you say aye.
Aye.
The folks know, and it is approved. Okay. Next thing we're going to have is school celebrations. We have Mr. James Carter here tonight, and this is a truck we got a picture he was going to give away to somebody that's in attendance tonight.
It disappeared.
You're late! All right, anyway, Mr. Carter, go ahead, sir. Just whatever you need to do, present that.
All right. As I said, my name is James Carter. I like to walk around, so y'all have to follow me if you want to look at me. That way, I won't get in trouble in the corner nowhere, you know? But our program, Chesapeake County High School Automotive, of course, I come home five years ago, it's been a blessing. I mean, I really enjoyed it. This is a great place to work. Our administrators and the other educators are awesome. I mean, they stepped in and helped me, and I had no idea what was going on. So just kudos and thank them very much for getting me to this point now. Getting me to teach at UU this year for high school was awesome also. The students loved it. I mean, they told me before I ever knew that I was teaching. "Mr. Carter, did you say the students are correct?" Now, our program has changed a lot from back whenever I was actually going to high school. Here, I graduated in eighty-eight or something like that, and I remember that program. And I wasn't in it. It didn't, it wasn't attractive to me, okay? It looked like a cave, you know, everybody's sitting around throwing stuff, and, you know, the garbage cans overflowing and things. It just was not attractive. And I think some of you might remember those days. So I wanted to change this, okay? Whenever Ms. Dick can address me about what did I think I could do with the program, I said, "I believe I could do something, something that hadn't been done." Whenever I was in with Mr. Gilzer, I told him, I said, "I want to change it." And that's what I've done. So what is Chesapeake Automotive? Just a little bit about Chesapeake Automotive. Do we work on cars? Yes, we do. The kids love it. They get in there, they get dirty, they do things that you will do in a real-life city, in a shop. You're in town, or Jackson, or Selma, or even at their homes. They learn these skills, and these are skills that they'll cherish. I mean, they'll never lose these skills. Whether they do it for a living or not, they've got it under their belt. We do electrical. As you see, these guys here are just in there with the battery, and they're just really, really getting into what they're doing. We'll tear them completely apart, and we'll all get them put back together. But the main thing is, if you'll notice in this picture right here, is it's not just one doing the work, okay? I like to get them together in a group. I like to get all those walls tore down of who's who, okay? When they're in my shop, I want them to act as if they're all one. You've got to act as if you're one in this shop. For one, it's not big enough for 25 students to be done at one time, but for another, it's going to help them align, be able to get along with other people that work with them, okay? Now, do we do academics? A lot of people think, "Oh, it's just shop. We don't read in, writing, math, and things like this." Yes, Mr. McGee was right. We do a lot of academics. Today's service manuals are college-level or above, okay? Just to be able to work on your vehicles out here in the parking lot, these service manuals are college-level and above. Now, I am not an English teacher. Don't blame me. But if I need help, we'll go back to what I said about the fellow educators over there. They're awesome. They help me. I mean, if I have these guys write a paper, I could shift a paper to them, and they'll say, "Do you need to have them do this, and two?" And I have them do this, 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 this. So we do a lot of academics, a lot of math. If you'll notice, a lot of technology. I mean, these laptops have been a blessing because my textbook is online. They can access this 24/7, anywhere there's internet. They can take quizzes. They can do research, everything. I can monitor every time they log on, what they did when it was on, what tests they took. I could pull their test up, see what they missed, and give feedback to it. And it's, you can't beat it. Now, do we work on skills? Yes, we do. Here, they're working with wiring. This right here is a group I've got right now that's really sealed, quite a bit wiring. They're actually doing wiring repair. A lot of wires in these cars now. And we got tire machines. They're learning how to use these things. I mean, y'all got tires on your car. You've got to have them put on. You've got to have somebody I can be able to do it for you, okay? If you'll notice there, there's a laptop sitting there, and there's a bunch of squeaky lines on it. That's actually a wiring diagram. These guys right here are repairing a wiring problem on a vehicle using a diagram and tools in their hands and skills they learned. So there's a lot of skills being involved. Here was a complete engine build. This did it right here, asked if he could do this. He went in, he completely rebuilt a late-model engine and put it in an older model Corvette and had it run. I mean, he was, they did an awesome job. How about work ethic? The biggest word I hear in the community that I hear, I talk to a lot of dealerships, a lot of shops, I was in a lot of dealership shops. And our biggest problem was work ethic, okay? That's what they're looking for. They don't have to be the best at everything on working on their cars, as long as they're trainable, they show up to work, they leave their phones alone, and they stay all right. That's what they're looking for, reliability. If you'll notice right there, that's our shop. It doesn't always look that plain, guys, I promise. But if you'll notice, everyone is doing something. If I can keep these students doing something, we have no problems with them. They enjoy it, they're working together, it's teamwork, it's what the community's looking for. Now, it's not about the skills, it's not about me, it's not about the technology, it's really all about students, okay? This right here was a trip that we took to the Corvette Museum and factory. We actually toured the factory. They got to see these Corvettes being built. They got to, from a roll of steel to the finished product, they got to see this. This right here is at the museum, they got to take pictures there, and that's momentum. Everybody had to buy them. But not only that, as we've got our club skills, this is, since I've got there, I took that club, and I've really tried to make it do something. From that, we started getting into the parades. And if you'll notice, every one of them is there, they're smiling, they look like they're having a good time. Sure, it's a parade day, sure, they're out of class, but I see this right here every They all want to work together, they all want to be noticed, they want to be a part of something. And this program seems to be doing a pretty good job of it. We have really, really had a lot more student involvement in my classes. They're growing to where I can't fit another class in. If I could fit another class in, Mr. Gatlin would probably throw three or four in there for me. But, you know, we're trying. But if you'll notice here, it's all about the students. They're enjoying themselves. They really like doing this, and you can sneak academics in there too, whenever they're enjoying it. You can, you can show them, I'm having them write resumes right now, just learning how to write resumes, and they get to the skills, and, "Well, I don't have those skills." And I says, "Whoa, what about targeting? What about the technology, you know, scanning diagnostics?" "Yeah." I said, "You've got skills." Man, they just light up, then they start putting all kinds, "I can sweep the floor, I can do this," you know? And it makes a difference. It makes them feel good, makes them enjoy being here, makes them enjoy coming to school. And I think I have probably helped, I would like to think I have helped, with graduation rate, with confidence. Letting these students know that they can come into this shop, they're learning these life skills, they're enjoying themselves, they're working together, they're not all alone by themselves, over there trying to figure something out. It builds their confidence to where that they think that they can get out there, or they know that they can get out there, and they can get a job. Now, we do work for scholarships. Our Skills USA Club, we get together, we compete. I've been competing for the last three years, it took a minute to get it rolling. We have carried someone to the state competition every year. This year is the first year I've carried all five students to the state. I was, I fell out on the floor, I asked her if she was correct, and she told me all this stuff. But when they get, this right here is actually a picture at a state competition, this is one of our students, and he's worked on the front-end lining machine, which we're working real good together, trying to get, because whenever they go to these competitions, they're having to use this equipment that we don't have. So we're working. I've had a lot of companies around that would, would help me. I could bring a student out, send him out, and they would help him a little bit, to help him get the fear away of seeing this monster out there and not knowing what to do with it. So it's helping a little bit. Here is our first state win since I've been here, it was 2016, with this gentleman, it's Level One. Of course, I've got four levels, Level One, Two, Three, and Four. That was an exciting day for him and myself also. These are the five that competed this year that all won regionals. We went to Paris, Tennessee, and we took them. I mean, every one of them had nine students to compete against in, in regionals, and we took them. I mean, that was awesome. I kept hearing Chesapeake County, Chesapeake County. I thought, "I'm going to record this, you know? Nobody's going to believe this." But the kids love it. I mean, they really enjoy it. Now, this is a state competition this year. That young man out there, what you left there, which is double digits, which is one of the best pictures I've ever taken in my whole life. He took first place in our Level One this year. The one on the far right, he was the one that was working on the front-end lining machine. He took third place in state this year. It was really good. And they were competing against students from all of the, I mean, all over the state, that's our countries, nationals, but state, all over the state. It was over, in different competitions, there was over 2,500 students across the state of Tennessee over competing in different things. This young man right here, he did really good, he was proud, his daddy was proud. While we're there, they're winning scholarships. He got $10,000 scholarship for a local tech college, Lincoln Tech or NADC, some of them. They give him $10,000, cut off the back, scholarship to take care of program. Now, he's a junior, so next year, if he goes in this first place, there'll be another $10,000 to go with that $10,000. So I think it will be. They're both up together. The third place, he actually got, I think, $4,000? Yeah, $4,000 for third place, plus he got another, he competed last year, got to stay, he got another thousand. He wound up, I think he told me today, right at $9,000 from the last two years of competing, and then taking a qualifying test to see where they were at academically. His ACT score didn't make a difference, even though they tell them, you know, they don't look at AC, they do look at ACTs. They do. There's all five of my bird certifications. I told Mr. Gilzer, I try to keep it short, but certifications is big to me because these students want recognition, just like I want recognition. Everyone in here would like some type of recognition. That's my grandfather, that's my dad. Some type of recognition. Students are vehicle recognition. Student certification right here is ASE, is Automotive Service Excellence. This right here is a nationally-known certification for automotive, okay? But this is a student certification. So high school students can actually reach out there and get this. I started this right here about three years ago also. We've been growing in our rates this year right now. I think I was just talking to Mr. Gatlin. As of today, I think we've got 13 students that are ASE certified that be walking, they're getting their patches to wear on their gowns. Last year, I had 100%, which was a lower head count in there, and a longer class period to work with. I had 100% last year, and I think that when I looked tonight, it was 82%. So I took that little bit of drop because of the shorter class periods I had to work with them, and more students to the test. So I mean, that made a big difference. But that right there will help them get places. These are former student track. They are working right here in our community. The dealerships are scarfed from them. Some of them has went to tech college, and some of them are hired right out of high school. I have one company here just called me, and I need, I need somebody. So I said, "Well, I'm starting this little work-study program. We'll get you somebody and see what you think of it." Looks like they're going to hire him right out of school. This gentleman right here is up there at Lonnie Coward Ford. He went to tech college. He was one of my first seniors, once I got going here, or second, second-year senior after being here two years. We worked with him, he got two-thirds of his scholarships paid in two years with me. We worked hard and got him two, two-thirds of his scholarship to University of Northwest Ohio paid. And his ACT score, even though they say it doesn't matter, it does. He had the highest ACT score of any incoming freshman up there that year, and I think his was a 25, which gave him, all of his academic classes that he took was free. And he'd come out there with a associate's degree of applied science. Now, he's up at Lonnie Coward Ford right now, they've been really good, they've hired several of our students. Here's one of our students, he just went straight into work. Another one just went straight into work. Here's one that went to TCAT, Jackson, okay? He just finished a program up there with Mr. Bush. Not too many people kind of say they ever got through Mr. Bush, okay? He did real well, he's ASE certified, he got Ford Asset Certified, and we got him a job at Golden Circle. Loved him. Matter of fact, they've got one of our students up there now, but they've hired him. He goes up there and works after school. He's going to go through TCAT, they're going to work him through TCAT and hire him right out of TCAT. They said that we can keep giving students like this, they'll hire from me every year. But best of all, that I can say anything about this program is getting these students to actually own themselves. The best of all is getting the students to learn from former students. This gentleman on the right is working for Austin Chevrolet. He is our student. The one on the left is this year's senior. He's been going up there learning, working with them, and building a relationship and an opportunity to go straight to work if need be. That's just a little bit about Chesapeake Automotive. If you have any questions, come in.
Mr. Carter, you had a first this year in your certification?
Yes, I didn't tell them that. In our ASE certification, we had the first female to be ASE certified this year. Sure did. She reached out there and grabbed it, and she said, "I want that." And she got it. It was really good. I expect more next year. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Trying. Okay. And I think the next person is, is this Kat? Dr. Kat, sir, the hardest-working man in education. I believe you wanted to share with the board that.
Which one? ACT. First, I want, before I talk about ACT, I want to say what Mr. Carter is, we had a meeting here with different industry paperworkers, a vocational meeting, and Ms. Pew headed that up. And I'll never forget what the guy from Ford said, said, "We'll take every kid that Mr. Carter gives us because of what they learned from Mr. Carter." And I think that's, he's a fine man, but he also cares about the kids, and they're better just to experience the kind of person he is. So I appreciate him being there where he does. He mentioned ACT two or three different times, how important it is, and it's very important to us. It's a focus, it's two of our five goals, our district goals aligned with ACT. And this year, we tested, we're going to test 100% of our students, around two, 22 or so is the number of this year's juniors, next year's seniors. So they took the test, and the date on the test was 191 tested, and 76 met the 21 or above goal or all four benchmarks. It was 34 of those students. It was 79 students that we had. So we had 79 that were 21 or above on ACT, and we had 34 students that were, had met all four benchmarks, which is for math, it's 22, for sciences, 23, English is 18, and for reading is 22. So that's what the four benchmarks are. So we're working hard. Our goal for the district goal for math is a 19. We've met that so far, but I want to tell you, we've had some students that did not test, some of those probably not performed as well as we've got some that have. We're hoping for that, but, you know, so we're right there around that 19.8 for a total with ACT, which came up a tenth of a point. And, you know, we've got ACT prep, we've got a lot of things that we do to try to support and, but what we have found out that it's a total impediment of all the standards, and our in-service this summer, we're working with Dr. Phillips, and he's going to help our, it's the second time, actually, he's worked with us once before, and just give the strategies and techniques to share with our students, because it is money. 21 on ACT, you know, that's money for our community that parents don't have to pay for college. And, you know, we want them to be exposed to everything academical that we can at the high school, you know, and our grades are important to the high school. But I've heard Mr. Gilzer say this several times, you know, in the course test, ACT, which one carries the money with that? I think he shared that at one of our parent meetings. ACT is the one that we're attached to and focused on. So this, next week, the 11th, no, it's the 14th. It's the 14th. The mayor has met with Mr...
You're right, 11th.
The 11th, the mayor has met with Mr. Gilzer, and he's going to recognize those juniors. So we have 79 that are going to go out and be a part of that celebration, that recognition. You know, this past year at our academic banquet, we had 102 students that were recognized for leading those 21 or all four benchmarks. So, now, like I said, it's down a little bit, but we're working hard to get that number up there. So, you know, it's here with us, it's going to be with us. So we're just, we're just trying to support, and all our teachers have bought into that, you know? So they have ACT question of the day, they have, you know, different skills and trainings that they go to help with that. So that's what's going on in high school with ACT. Our teachers are working hard, and our students are working hard, you know? And, you know, sometimes if a kid says, you know, "I'm not going to college, I want to go to the workforce," they're not taking the ACT, there's no use for it, they don't say. But we have a good group of these juniors this year. They all were committed to going in and taking the test, even if they had dreams to go work in the workforce and thought, "Well, that's not important to me." But they did a really good job of giving us an effort, you know, for the ACT.
Gentlemen, the next person on our meeting agenda is Mr. Steve Milligan. He represents the TCAT, Tennessee College for Applied Technology. He's the director of that at Crump. And he, along with the work of Mr. John Fry, have agreed for another dual enrollment opportunity for our students to invest in welding. TCAT with Crump has, he can talk more about it, but for our opportunities for our students, it's given them a career-minded pursuit as far as an occupation. I wrote down this from a, from a previous news report that I had heard, that of the 5.6 million jobs that are currently available that require some level of skills, 4.2 million of those jobs do not require a four-year degree, but are still career-earning jobs. And again, what our hopes are and expectations with this partnership with TCAT out of Crump is that we're going to have even more students leaving high school with some credentials, some certification, something closer track to finish the certification through his program that will give them a well-earning career job. And TCAT out of Crump, I'll have to say also, as it was concluded, I just want to make sure that Mary knows about it, what they tell on their website is that they have an 89% employment rate for those who complete their coursework with zero financial debt of those. Now, there's not another university in the TBR or the UT system that can claim the same, but that's what the TCATs routinely do, is the expectation. So we want to raise that level of awareness for our families to realize that they are as much or better of a viable opportunity for us as parents to send our kids to these places of learning and to have the certification to get them a well-earning job.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for that introduction. And I can ditto Mr. Carter's enthusiasm, and you hit all the key points right on the head, so your presentation's great. I just put together some brief notes for you, so you can kind of take and read later. And the, uh, the placement rate Mr. Gilzer referenced was actually, uh, our old one at the end of 2016, when we calculated our completion and placement rates, we came up just ahead of 92% placement. So we're, I don't know how much further we can go on that, but placements holding up really well. And a little bit about the welding program, and you can read the details. It was, uh, we were given the opportunity to provide, to apply for a grant through Governor Haslam's Drive to 55 capacity project building grant program, or something along those lines. And the whole purpose of that was to expand educational training opportunities for workforce development is what the purpose was. And at Crump, where our welding facility is, is packed. We're running a day program and a night program right now. And we didn't have any room to put any more students. So, so what we looked at was opportunities to partner with school systems to expand the students that we can train in our welding program. So we, we took the opportunity, applied for the grant. You kind of can see the funding amount there, 114,000, and a little bit of change is what the grants are, and it's to purchase equipment and to set up the welding lab. The, just a little bit of information, the, according to the Tennessee Department of Labor, the median salary for welders in Tennessee is $36,000 roughly. The demand in, in our region is very high. There's more demand for welders than what we're able to, to provide. And I don't know if that's going to change. Manufacturing is surging. Fortunately, our economy is, appears to be booming. And so every day, welders, welders, welders. So we're trying our best to pump them out. Unfortunately, partnerships like the one with Chester County is going to help us keep meeting that demand. Basically, the, uh, the program will follow the curriculum of the TCAT Crump program. And this year, actually, starting in the fall, all of the statewide, there's 27 colleges of applied technology across the state. This year, we've kind of gone through a sometimes painful effort to make all of our curriculum statewide curriculums. And actually, in the fall, the, um, the TCAT welding curriculum will be the same from Memphis to Elizabethan. So if a student were to go through the program we're doing at Chester County High School, which is the TCAT curriculum, if they decide to come to Crump, they'll be ahead. If they go to Jackson, they'll be ahead. If they want to go to TCAT Knoxville or Chattanooga or wherever, it's, it's all aligned and will be the same. So their credits will just transfer to any technical college in the state. So I think that's going to be a big benefit. We are certified by the American Welding Society to offer the AWS Level 1, which is beginner welder, and AWS Level 2, which is advanced welder certifications. Quite frankly, we've typically, AWS Level 1 is, is the one that we've, um, our students have graduated with because they came in with no experience, start from the ground floor, and then by the time they finish, they've kind of exited that level. What we hope is starting, uh, more high school students in our program. They'll come in with advanced skills, and we're, our goal is to exit those out of Level 2. So we're going to be able to graduate a higher skilled welder. Does that make sense? Currently, we have a total of 150 students in our welding programs, which makes us, by one student, the largest welding program in the state. Uh, we have two, I mentioned, at Crump, and we run high school programs in Wayne County, Hardin County, and Addison High School. So Chester County will be our fourth high school to add. Do you have any questions?
After the, after they've been to the year through the high school, when they come out, they possibly certify for jobs then?
They will. Some of our high school students go straight to work. It depends on what their ultimate goal is. A lot of them are ready to go make money. So they'll, they'll go straight to work. They will have those skills. Our welding programs, TIG is typically the TIG welding process would be our, our last process that we're going to teach. High school students usually get through the STIC process and the MIG welding process. And so MIG is, um, TIG is what you use on stainless steel. MIG is mostly what a lot of our industries use, so they'll get to that point. And so when they graduate high school, they could actually, quite a few of them just go straight to work. Now, some of them, and that's one of the popularities of our night program. We have a lot of students that'll go to work, and they're working as welders in the daytime. Then they want to come back, so, so they come in at night and learn the rest of the welding processes. Usually, it's a, you know, sometimes they have bigger ambitions and maybe join the pipe fitters union or the boulder makers union or get on the road jobs. Those are typically going to be higher paying jobs, of course, you're away from the area for weeks at a time. But, but a lot of the students will go to work, and then they come to us at night. So, yes, they can go straight from high school to career.
But then they can also just come...
They can just run them down and then finish up. If a student were to start as a junior, which is when they're eligible for dual enrollment, and they do junior year fall, spring, senior year fall and spring, they should exit the program with one, our welding program is a full year. So it's three trimesters, and a trimester is four months. They should exit with one trimester finished, so they would come to us and have about eight months left to go. And a little unique twist on the, the TCAT programs, we're competency-based. So we don't make you accumulate hours to graduate. We make you achieve competencies. So if you pick it up quickly, you're a hard worker, and, and maybe you're working as a welder, maybe on a farm, or you have welding at home, and you proceed right through. We're not going to make you sit in the chair to accumulate that one-year timeframe. Once we take you off on competencies, you're gone. So we have had some high school students finish up, come to us. Let's see. Last year, a student graduated in May, took them on to June, started with us in July, and then graduated from us in December, so they kind of, and then exited and went to work. So it's kind of, you know, students can, can move kind of at their own pace.
Well, thank you. We're looking forward to it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, first units. The next thing on our agenda is going to be, uh, one big package, I believe. This is something, yeah, Dr. Cat, you're going to address this one real?
No, no, that's not, that's, no, it's, yeah, his is down there. No, I was going to talk about it. Now, actually, if you listen carefully to Mr. Carter's presentation, I'll let you go because you said you...
I got kids. I am.
So thank you, sir.
Thank you much.
For coming here. Thank you.
But, you know, as Mr. Carter mentioned about the work ethic of the students, how the industry, who have been consistently telling us, we want to make sure that these students leaving the high school programs, going into our line of work, come to work, not only come to work, show up, to show up on time, to show up drug-free, and are good, honest people who do the work. Uh, so the effort was to also focus our attention on seniors enrolling. And that's what the question, or the request is, is consider this work ethic certification or certificate. It is not a tie-in with diploma requirements. This is just another layer of accountability for seniors to be able to proceed through a work ethic commitment. They're earning points based on them. Again, these are areas that have been raised by local industry, local companies, who are hiring these individuals to say, "These are important to us." Uh, I actually was able to, just in my recent reading of the, I know that you've got a copy of the TSBA journal. In that journal that was delivered, they have these 2017 Magna Awards. The honorable mention for that, which I have copies if you want to see, was an honorable mention going to Hamlin County in East Tennessee, Maristown, Tennessee, where they're defining college and career readiness through a work ethic diploma. They are the basis of this structure here. And John Fry is here to talk about it. If you have any questions about this. But again, it's addressing these areas, as you see here, areas where the students, when they start their senior, if they want to work to this, this is optional. They don't have to. But it is leaving the high school. If they do work for this certificate, then what we're going to be asking for people like Donna Butler at Arvin Sangio or other local industry to say, "Would you be willing to put these guys or girls in the front of the line with opportunities for future employment because they have met these credentials or these levels of accountability?"
Who tracks this or keeps up with it?
Right now, it would be at the school, it would be at the school level itself.
The way, the way they run the program in, in East Tennessee, we borrowed that from, uh, Dr. Cat would set up a time to speak with his seniors. Those, they would all get the information. Those that want to do that would let them know. And then the student is responsible, it fits in the program for work ethic. The student is responsible for everything in there. And each of those items, as you achieve them, if there are those that you check off early, then it's your responsibility to have your documentation. Go see Mr. Gilzer and say, "Hang on, we did this. I had a presentation at a particular skills competition, or I did this," and Mr. Gilzer would sign off on that. The student has to keep those. At the end of the year, they would come and see, I guess, Ms. Emerson about their attendance. Those things at the top with, with attendance issues, and get those signed off. And if they have everything that meets the point total, gets their notebook, brings them in to whoever will keep those at his office, then we will give each of those a certificate and take out to the workplace.
And the drug testing and everything is...
Drug testing is an optional piece in there. It is worth a certain value of points. You can obtain the 40 points to get that certification without having a drug screen. You can certainly have a drug screen and get those points. That was a contentious point in the development of this with industry because they wanted it to be a mandatory piece. And a lot of times with schools and funding for that, if you just leave it up to the children, leave it up to the kids, it's a different thing. So it's not mandatory, and as, as one industry person stated, if they could give you a clean drug screen in school in March, and by the time they get to us in August to get a job, that would pass. So it, it's a good piece to have, and it's certainly one of the many ways they can earn the points. But if nothing in that is a mandatory piece, you just have to earn the necessary points out of all the options.
We were talking about this. I was asking Carter a couple of questions about it. And one of the things was, he was saying, you know, like, we could maybe work with the Chamber and some of the local businesses. And, you know, it doesn't guarantee them a job, but, you know, if some of them, some of the companies would possibly say, "Well, if they have this certificate, we will give them an interview." So they might agree to that. I think at least give them a, a interview where, without this certificate, they might say, "Would you leave that 20 other people that were going to use it for you?"
It's always the first issue that they bring up about the need for, to improve the soft skills or the professional skills. And this addresses the professionalism skills without any investment of resources other than the student's time. And they do get some type of, you know, bags that they can wear at graduation or some type of memento that will reflect that they have done those criteria to meet that certificate.
You can make a motion to, to, you know, to be second?
I make a motion with...
For a second.
All right, we have a motion, second, we're going to accept the work ethic certificate. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. I oppose, no. And it is approved. I think they would hope to give them some life skill if they'll need to. All right, the next thing in our package is going to be the, uh, out-of-county tuition. For the last couple of years, tuition's been $5.50 for one year for one student, $800 for two or more students' family. We've got a recommendation that that tuition be $600 for one student and for two or more, $900. Uh, these increases, it shows as 9.1% and 12.5% respectively. Does anyone have any commentary?
Are the students that are already in the system, their school also, or grandfathered in? It would be the, these are, every year, the policy reads, every year, you establish what that tuition cost is. So with that being the case, then every year, you make the decision, and it doesn't grandfather.
So we have a motion, I think, to be increasing.
I make a motion, increasing.
You have a second? I'm sorry. All right, we have a motion, second, that we do approve the new rates, which would be $800, excuse me, uh, $600 a year for one student and $900 a year for two or more. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. I oppose, no. And it is approved. All right, the next thing on here is project graduation and fundraising part of that. And I think that's what Dr. Cat is, he just knows so much. I thought he was hearing a conversation about it.
Well, first, let me, let's know that, that we definitely feel project graduation is a great, is a great event, and it's something that our students look forward to since my time, this is my third year at the high school. And I've seen that, that project graduation, it just grow and grow and grow. And, uh, it's almost like each class tries to beat the class that was before them. And again, it's, it's, it's a great cause. It gets kids there one, you know, the weekend, the night, after graduation. But we have the, the group that's going out and raising $25,000 to $30,000 for that one-night giveaway. So I was talking to Mr. Gilzer about this, you know, the first year, because it was something that different community people were coming to me and asking me that our sports team would come in, that the different groups that were coming, and, and project graduation being thrown into that, they were thinking that we were just really beating the community to death with funds. And we wanted to be conscious of that, and, and, uh, so I thought, and talked to Mr. Gilzer and said, "You know, is there a way that we maybe could get a program developed where, as a freshman coming in, they're responsible for $25 their freshman year? Then their sophomore year, they're responsible for $25. Then their junior year, their senior year, so that would be $100 per kid. And then when they become senior, we have 204 seniors this year. And we started that with them, them being a freshman, then that would be $20,000 that we could give away, or they could get that money back that night." Uh, now, there may be some businesses that would still, churches that would maybe still like to add to that, to that pool of money. And I'm not saying, you know, that you can. You might want to think about capping that because they'd still go out and try to, to raise more money. And again, I'm not, I'm certainly not against project graduation. I don't want anybody in the room to think that I think it's a bad thing, but I think it's really gotten sold.
It's got out of hand. I mean, I've had people, it's called, they just really...
And, and, you know, it's, 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 it's for a good cause. It's money that those students get for coming and staying all night. There's some different partners that they have to do. But, you know, some have to sell 10, 10 buds, six ribs, you know? And so there's things that people would go out and do, and it puts a strain on the parents to try to go out. And honestly, it's like most anything, you're going to have five or six parents that are taking on the majority of the, the task of trying to raise the money. Maybe 10 parents. And, and so it was just a thought. It was a conversation that we had way back then. And, and I've just kind of sit back this year, they're on target, around $25,000, you know, that they have raised. And they've done a great job raising it. But again, they've gone out and they're, we're just going to the same people in the community and asking them to, to donate. And I think, you know, that was just... Uh, and I think, you know, that was just something that maybe we consider to, to look into, I would say.
Project graduation has never been managed by the school system. They've always been the entity that uses our name, uses our facilities, uses our kids to raise money. But they've never had any oversight, like every other minor sports budget, any type of club, organization to the school, they have to submit fundraisers to us requests. And we're able to parse out with those fundraiser requests. Like if the football team wanted to raise X number of, have number of fundraisers in the basketball team, we can say, okay, you have two or three, you have two or three. We can manage those, but with project graduation, there's never been that oversight. So they have no, uh, like you said, no ceiling or no cap with the number of fundraisers they have and the amount of money they can run.
The first year I met with the project graduation coordinator, the, the parent that was in charge of it, and there were like 15 different events that they had planned throughout the year. Then, uh, the next year, there was like 25 different, uh, fundraising events. Now, this past year, I did meet with the, the, uh, the person that was in charge of it because they were new, see, every year it's a young parent coming in, if they haven't had seniors that have been exposed or experienced with that, they're all new trying to go in. And they, and again, they want to do, uh, they want to have a great night for their seniors and, and, and I can appreciate that, and I want them to have a great night too. But I also think that, you know, they can have a great night by, uh, and, and, you know, I think we could also look and say, if, if there's a kid that can't pay that money, you know, uh, that maybe we could identify that kid early on and, and, uh, take care of them too. I'm not saying that we want anybody to not be able to be, uh, a part of.
Not eliminated from, because they can't come up.
Because they can't come up.
Well, I mean, that's like, because the board, we give a thousand dollars every year. And I think the county does a thousand, but, or we've done that in the past.
So, I mean, if we kept, if, if, if you kept that practice in place, to where you had that kind of in the bank for those, those students that could not come up with their hundred dollars, you know, I don't know, it's just, just a thought.
But, you know, 25 dollars a year is not.
I wouldn't think so, you know, I mean, I, I, I think that's a management, now the problem, the problem is, is that, you know, you'd have to start with the freshman class because, you know, you couldn't ask, I mean, you could ask, I guess, but it would maybe put it more in mind, it's like, all right, next year you could go over a hundred dollars. Uh, so I think it's something that maybe has, we have to slowly step into, uh, if, if it's something that you.
Oh, I think we definitely need to, because I, I mean, I've been involved, and I don't have any cookies at different fundraisers myself, and it's about to.
The project graduation?
Yeah, yeah. Me and Satan cooked 1,450 pork chops one day. Yeah.
Well, see, I, I saw Mayor Satan in Millers and I asked him, was he going to cook the?
He said, no.
He said, he said, nobody asked.
We had one senior parent there the night we were getting ready to cook. One senior parent.
Is there, is there any oversight of the money?
No, it never, it doesn't run through the school budget.
But if we, would that be a requirement, if, much like the other fundraisers, if we go through that process now? Because that amount of money, there needs to be some oversight if we're using the school system.
That's one thing, we're talking about this though oversight, and you hope everybody's honest, but who knows when you start that, that kind of.
They likely are.
So far, there are, but again, all these rules and regs as far as fiscal accountability is not because we're all good people. Somebody screwed up down the road, that's what created these checks and balances.
Well, being so closely connected to schools, it needs the same management for these other fundraisers.
Especially when everybody looks at it, it's been a school function. But I think we definitely need to, so the process.
What would be the process for the next two or three years?
You know, I mean, I, I think we can meet with the, the, the parents that are in charge of it and explain to them, and we have a eighth grade parent night, uh, next, next Monday. Uh, so it'd be a good time to tell our eighth grade parents right now, this is. They're going to be senior before you even turn around. Good, so, uh, but I, I just think that, that we tell them that if it's the 20,000 dollar or 20, you know, we got 236, 38 freshmen coming in this next year, so, you know, you're looking at.
Maybe on those years, we don't have a plan for them to put in, we can still set a cap, can we? And, and gain some oversight.
Right, that's what, you know, you may tell, we may tell them, say, look, this is where it's going to be, this is the top end of, uh, and, and maybe get to where it's, it's, uh, the meeting has to be done to where you can, you can have these events. Because, you know, baseball's going after, football.
Basketball.
On the short term, it basically limits the number, you're not necessarily the, where it's coming from. It was just a cap, and we, you have more oversight, or we have more oversight, the approval, the method.
And I can tell you, I spoke, I spoke with Mark Barber, who is responsible for it this year, and he understands this, he understands all.
He burned out.
Yes, because he and, and Vicky, his wife, have really worked a lot, and I don't know how many events they've had. But, but it's, I know it's been several. So it's just, you know, and again, with the right oversight. And again, I think you were talking, Shane, about what are you going to do with this junior class currently, and sophomore class and freshman, you've got three years there that we will have to probably provide some school level oversight and talk about a cap. But really, it would go into play with the 25 dollars per year, start with the incoming class for the 17, 18 year.
And I talked to several friends that are principals of schools around, and they're getting out of the project graduation, you know, there are more and more schools that are just not. And I think it's a great event, you know, I mean, it's, it's really a good, a good night, you know, they, they have it pretty hard, you know, have it up, so they'll use our facility for the project graduation tonight, but it is something that's, that our kids look forward to and, uh.
But you can do it for less than 25, 30,000 dollars.
Absolutely, absolutely.
About a lot of talk to us and stuff.
The next two years, you know, we're saying that we want to kind of work with the parents and get up and say. If we meet, uh, get up close to this and, and basically cut off fundraising.
That's what board says, we'll, we'll, we'll.
So they'll, they'll fundraise the next two or three years in the traditional way, they'll just have a cap. And then if these new freshmen come in, that cap will be met by this.
By the number of students.
That's a good idea. I make a motion, will we adopt the program as presented that way? We set a cap and for the next two or three years, the cap fundraisers, and then at that point, we're coming, as a program, Dr. Catlett.
We set the dollar, the cap at, it's 20, 25?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I do, yeah.
All right, we have a motion second, and it was going to try for the next three years, the cap, the money of approximately 20,000. And then after that, starting with the freshman, 2017 and 18, we'll start like the 25 a year per student to be raised. Is that correct? Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and you would think that, and I think that would work out a lot better.
As far as, you know, if there's.
Any action?
No, no, there's no action.
Um, the only thing, y'all saw that we have to update things on there, so if you have any questions or anything. One thing that I had, uh, talked about and we, I've been asked about is, uh, this is like our last people we're getting, 2016, 17, and, uh, of course, it's approved, please, we'll probably have special call meetings. And I have been approached and asked by a couple of people, you know, well, how many meetings do y'all have a year? And I, you know, and we say, well, normally it's like about seven.
Seven.
And, uh, it was brought to me and, and I've talked to a couple of people about probably having maybe like, say, 10 meetings a year during the school, maybe the summer months, not having a, necessarily having a meeting.
We can't have one in the summer.
In, in, well, yeah, that'll be a special, y'all, those are special call meetings anyway, that's, yeah.
But, but what, what the discussion made was, well, if you had one, like, during the school year, every month, then if parents or any problems, if they wanted to address forward, then you have a meeting. Where like the last meeting we had was in March, and then this, so it's been almost two months since we've had a meeting, so if, had we anything anybody wanted to address forward or anything we needed to deal with, you know, it would have been, like I say, almost eight weeks.
Well, and budget amendments also, where we have to wait a 60 day period.
Especially that, yeah.
I mean, and, and, and I thought of that too, I didn't know if maybe, like I say, if we had one of them in the summer or, like I said, we would call them if they left budget approval, or, but at least one, y'all think one a month during the school, or say change it to 10 meetings a year, and then we have a special weekend.
Of course, with the special, you, you've got a limited agenda. Or what Jay Blot's on, if you've already got a general, the, the agenda can, you know, be, uh.
Discuss or.
Well, what? And I'm not saying I'm for this, I'm just throwing this out there, what? If you're going to have 10 and then one or two for a special one in the summer, why don't you just do a monthly meeting? And that way, anything can be on the agenda, you're not limited.
I mean, that's, I kind of thought the same thing, but then I thought.
We're going to want it probably being that way anyway. But those extra two will be limited to the agenda where if something comes up that needs to be addressed before the new school year, it can be added there as well.
So you're saying just change it to we have a monthly forward meeting?
This makes sense.
Anybody else got an opinion or make a motion?
Y'all getting paid the same, so it's not like it's going to be, we're not, we're not going to divide your same dollar amount by now 12 instead of 7, so we'll still. It'll be a little bit.
We've got the latest, take care of that for a minute. I make a motion, I don't think that I'm on. Uh, we have a motion second, we have a board meeting each month, every year, any other discussion? Do we have to, no, make a budget, I mean, July?
My recommendation, we start, you know, of course, we, we like to coordinate this to make sure our budget, I mean, our board meetings come prior to a county commission meeting. So I want to see what their schedule is, and then we can come back. Uh, I could send you any information, I don't know, do they already have their, their meeting scheduled for?
No.
Out here?
For June.
Well, after June, for their next.
Well, there's, every other, every other night.
Okay.
On, on the second, is it the second Monday?
Okay.
Other night, that's, there's, that's just what theirs is.
So we can start it after July 1, fiscal year starts? If that's okay.
So we, and we don't have a meeting in June.
We will have, we'll have a special call meeting. Yeah, that's approved.
And then starting in July, we just have one for one, or another special. All right, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. I'm sorry.
No, it's not, well, we're going to discuss that, I was going to ask about that, uh, child, if it's somebody that's prospective to adopt it, are we going to have to call them by Jackson? And when you have that kind of.
That was in your, that was part of your consent agenda, but now it's, it's not what, part, it's not adoption, it's, uh, DCS involved with foster.
Right, but I, I, if they move, if they're living in Jackson, we've got to go to Jackson, pick them up, bring them down.
It is, now, again, we are, we are having to adjust or have to include in our board policy, this is a partnership or inter-agency, this is agreement with us and DCS. Our DCS contact person is Kendra Tack, Kendra.
Kendra Tack.
Uh, and I use the example, as it's been expressed to me before, like if there's a student who attends, like a Decatur County or Henderson County schools, who had been removed and placed in foster care in Chester from the ESU, that Every Student Succeed Act, they want to, they want to first consider that that student's home school would be the first choice or be considered as the choice for that student to continue to go. It does not mean that it has to happen, but that's a recommendation that DCS would come with, likely. What we would do is partner with DCS, and it would be a role like Kendra Tack, who she would come in and says, X student is now living in Chester County, but we make a recommendation that they continue to attend school at Henderson County. And what we would try to do is to determine if that is the best interest of the child. And if it's deemed to be the best interest of the child, it's responsibility of Chester County School District, Henderson County School District, and DCS to work out the plan in place, which includes everybody having a contributing factor in the budget.
So it's a joint?
Yes.
Okay, it's not.
It's not all.
To deal and it.
Well, they, one of the options is that it can be the school district like ours that pays it off. It can also be the option that DCS pays it off, or a partnership between them.
Because that could run into some money.
Yes, it is. It's been a constant conversation among, uh, federal programs, because this is a federal initiative, this came with ESU, and they explained this multiple times over, that we have to, TSBA gave us guidance, that we have to include this in our board policy.
They're playing around special bucks.
Playing the bucks that you owe. All right, anybody else have anything on board? Have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right.